My heavens, all right, so we're on full octane here tonight. So I am gonna, I'm Denise Treehouse, I'm gonna call to order this regular meeting of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners, September 19th, 2019. We are here in Evendale and delighted to be here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having us. We'll get to you in one moment because we're excited to hear what's going on here in Evendale. But we generally start our meetings with introductions. So Jacquette Panietto is to the far right of the dais. She is the clerk to the county commissioners. To my immediate right is Commissioner Todd Portune. To my immediate left is the vice chair of the commission, Stephanie Summer O'Dumas. Next to her is Jeppe Ludo, county administrator. Michael Friedman is our legal counsel, and Mayor Finan is next to him. So we will go on then with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand if you can. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance.
... The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also gonna move that we approve of the minutes of the previous session?
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so as you all know, or maybe some of you know, once a month, we take our meetings out into the community in the evenings so that we are more accessible to all the citizens of Hamilton County. And so, we are delighted to be here in Evendale, and we've asked Mayor Finan to join us tonight and give us a bit of an overview on what's happening in the community, and say as much as you'd like, Mayor. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. We're very happy to have you tonight in Evendale. I'm the mayor of this community, have been for about 3.9 months of that time. Evendale is, you're on our campus, which is spread over quite a number of acres here, and includes fire, police, recreation, swimming pools, ball diamonds, soccer fields, everything that you might want in a community, and we have it here for you, and we like to try to keep it in a very good, first-class condition if at all possible. There's 2,700 people who live in the village of Evendale at nighttime, but there's 27,000 people who work in the village of Evendale in the daytime. We are the world headquarters for three companies. The major one is GE Aircraft Engines, and you're probably all familiar with them, down on I-75. The other one is the Formica Corporation, and they're down on Rudding Road. And the third one, that you probably have not heard of, is the Gold Medal Products Company. Now, if anybody knows what they make, good luck, but they supply popcorn to 70 percent of the theaters in the world, in the world, and popcorn machines to make the popcorn itself. They're a huge hit in China, so that's what Gold Medal does, and they're a very good employer as far as the village of Evendale. We have a economic development project going on west of I-75, on Glendale-Melford Road, on the other side of I-75. I-75 is about three-quarters of the way through a major, major renovation project. It's some $94 million that are being spent to widen I-75 and widen the two bridges. And they are then going to, we're going to put some towers over there and some interesting things to say welcome to the village of Evendale, because a lot of people do not know where we are. We, the idea of the development over there, which is called Arrow Hub, is to attract advanced manufacturing companies, companies that have a relationship perhaps to GE, maybe not to GE. We have our first company is building its, how, building its building over there is a model, modal shop, and they make vibration-type of equipment and things like that. And they are combining their buildings from Sharonville and are combining into a new building over on I-75. So we have 52 acres we own now. We are optioning hundreds more, and we hope to have a major economic development project going on over there. So again, we're glad to have you, and I hope you have a good meeting here.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and thank you again so much for having us. So we have a number of speakers' cards, and I've put them into three different categories. None of the items, I think, are on the agenda, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of them we have talked about before. And so we're gonna move to that item first. It's a by leave item coming forward from the county administrator. So Jeff, if you could give us an overview of the resolution that's in the by leave packet, and then we will go to the speakers.
I assume we're talking about the Columbia Township?
We are indeed.
Actually, I have two items in the by leave packet, wanna make sure, I wanna make sure we're on the same eyes. This is a resolution authorizing a zoning map amendment for case Columbia 2019-01, Cambridge Retail from C Residence to EE Planned Retail. The board has had several public hearings about this. There is, I would also note that there is a, or there is a memorandum adjoining your resolution that speaks to the planning and development departments addressing the board, indicating that they will be engaging Columbia Township, the residents of Columbia Township, et cetera, to conduct a public hearing and to begin engaging the community on the comprehensive plan rewrite that was consistent with the discussion in the public hearing. So James Noes is here tonight. If the board would entertain, I'd like to call James Ford to provide any further context on the resolution before public comment.
Okay. And as he comes forward, so we've had a couple of public hearings related to this item, and so there were three things that were brought to our attention that the resolution is responsive to. The first one was additional birmingham along the street around the parking lot. The second one was to make sure, we had a firm understanding of the stormwater plan so that there would be no additional runoff going into the homes adjacent to this property, and we had an illustration of what that looked like last time, and that language is in here as well. And then the third one was related to the master plan. So it's not in the resolution, but attached in a memo from Planning and Development, and it talks about the revisiting to the master plan that we heard the township trustee agree to, so we hope that that will be expeditious, and the community will get a chance to weigh in on how that master plan looks moving forward. So that's, to my view, where we are this evening. Do you have anything to add?
No, all the other conditions, which were from the Regional Planning Commission and the RZC are included. So as you just noted, again, this is James Noes, Plan Development Director. Just from there, those three additional, the two items of the conditions, and the one letter which I had written in regards to our review of the Conference of Land Use update.
Okay, great, thank you, and we may have questions.
Okay.
All right. So the first speaker on this item is Mike Ty. And as always, you will have the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
First of all, we'd like to thank the commissioners for all the time you've spent on this issue. We're gonna have a meeting this weekend, a party, a block party, and we'll discuss it a little bit further. We just, it didn't have enough time, but we appreciate all the efforts that the staff has put into this, and the county commissioners, and everybody, so thank you for everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Debbie McLean.
Hi, I'm Debbie McLean, and I just had a question, 'cause I briefly got to read the resolution. So will we have another chance to comment? It looks like the resolution has made some, resolved some issues with the extra birmingham, no signage, no curb cuts onto Cambridge. Will we get to see this plan before it goes into effect, the public, the community?
So we have the resolution in front of us.
Talking about the comprehensive plan, or are we talking about?
The resolution for the dealership, approving the property. I don't know. Again, I apologize, the resolution that I read online very quickly.
Okay, so you are referring to this project, though? Not the master plan, which, you know, will, there will be meetings for that?
Yes.
So the resolutions in front of us, are you asking if there's gonna be an additional community meeting related to what we're passing?
Yes.
So that would be up to the local community?
Right, if there's a local community meeting, that's one thing, there will not be an additional meeting of the board of county commissioners?
No.
Right.
This is our final meeting, assuming it passes, or we dispose of the item. This will be our last meeting on this item.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, sorry that I misunderstood you. All right. Our next speaker is Stan Franklin.
Mike Ty, some of everything that I was gonna say.
Okay, very good, thank you. And thank you all for your patience. I know we've spent a lot of time together, and so, thank you all for, you know, it's an arduous process, but we appreciate your input, we appreciate the work that's been done, and the collaboration from the community and from the developers. So with that, I would like to move, well, unless the commissioners have any comments or questions?
No questions. I have a question.
Okay.
I don't have any questions, but if you wanna entertain comment also at this time before we vote. It has been a rather arduous process, I guess, if we quantify that in terms of hours spent both in meetings and outside of meetings, to make sure that we do the very best that we can to get it right. Issues like these are always very, very difficult to try to reconcile. You have people who are passionate on both sides of the question, and in great degree, everybody's right in terms of what they're raising and talking about, and so how do you reconcile that? It's tough. I am very grateful that there's been a willingness by the voices that I think are speaking to the hub, or the, not of the issue, a real willingness to try to find common ground and middle ground. And I think we've been able to accomplish that in what has been reflected relative to the three items that President Treehouse did outline in her remarks in framing the issue. In particular, for me, I think it's terrific that the whole stormwater issue, which has been a problem on Cambridge Road and in this area for quite some time, is going to be addressed in a manner where not only will this development and addition, that is, to come, as has been outlined before us, going to make sure that no additional problems will be created by virtue of what's to come with the improvement of the amendment. Second, though, and I think even more beneficial, is the fact that as that work is done, everyone is very conscious of the fact that there has been flooding, historic flooding, in the area, and there's going to be an effort to try to be able to address elements of that, either in whole or in part, within the context of what will be done specific to this development. And so out of this process, not only is the specific issue that was brought before us going to be addressed, but in addition to that, some longstanding problems relative to flooding in the area, I think we're all hopeful are going to be able to be addressed and mitigated as a consequence of this, and that's going to do a lot for quality of life in the community and the ability of residents and business to thrive and to work well together. So my thanks to everyone who's been involved for the time that you've all put in, many, many hours. You know, you alone know how much you've put into it, but from what I've seen, it's been a lot, and very grateful that you all have gotten to a point where you've been willing to try to work things out in a manner that's agreeable to all. So with that, Madam President.
Thank you.
Madam President, would just like to also make a comment about Columbia Township and the questions that I raised, that people brought answers to, and also, I guess, the passion of the residents in that area was just, for me, awesome to see, how you were consistent, how you were resilient as it relates to the answers maybe you didn't want to hear, but I thank the residents for being consistent in their attendance and their happiness.
Thank you. All right. I am going to move that we approve of the resolution authorizing a zoning map amendment for case Columbia 2019-01, Cambridge Retail from C Residence to EE Planned Retail.
Second?
Yes.
Unfortunately and reluctantly, I have to abstain from this.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. That takes care of my one set of speakers' cards. You are all welcome to stay if you'd like, but please don't feel obligated. So our next speaker is Monique Mazenhalter.
Oh, really? Oh, we get two minutes?
I'm reading from a legal notice of liability. It is designed to be used as evidence in court if needed, and intends to enlighten you and to protect you from attracting civil and criminal liability in relation to your actions and/or omissions surrounding the deployment of 5G technology within your constituency. 4G LTE small cells form an integral part of the 5G deployment. Both would cause me and my family to be exposed to wireless, non-ionizing electromagnetic radiation against our consent in our home. I have spoken at other meetings and provided you with information about this. As elected officials, you may be at risk of being liable if you do not take appropriate action to attempt to abate or prevent such harm to me or the public. I have studied the relevant facts, and I am aware of the danger. As a result, I am in fear, and I take the risk of harm and damage to me very seriously. Contamination of my home with 4G and/or 5G small cells may cause damage to my home if it becomes a health risk to me and renders my home uninhabitable. Irradiating me against my consent would be an application of force against my person. It causes fear of bodily injury and could be classified as a civil trespass and/or criminal assault. Any level of exposure of man-made, non-ionizing electromagnetic radiation can be diagnosed by my doctor as an adverse health effect pursuant to the World Health Organization International Classification of Diseases, ICD-10 Code W-90, thus rendering any safety limit as set by the government's safety standards obsolete as to protecting my health. This technology has been deployed already locally, so I expect that you are exercising due diligence to certify that all parties deploying it have enough insurance to cover compensation for damage or harm caused by it. I urge you to insist that public safety regulatory authorities prove that small cell densification is safe, and that any deployment of 5G, artificial intelligence, and/or the Internet of Things is regulated appropriately to ensure that the national security and safety of privacy of the public and myself is not compromised. I implore you to protect the public and myself from being persecuted by the passing of laws that harm us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this the letter that you sent via email? Is it the same thing?
Yes.
What I'm asking is, do you wanna give that to us for the record, or is that what we already have?
You already have it with more details and links.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you. Our next group of speakers are here relative to sewer rates, and so, and it's not related to an agenda item, am I correct? Okay. All right, our first speaker is Kevin Henschold. Good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Kevin Henschold, I'm a member of COFA, Communities United for Action. I'm here to talk about the sewer rate structures. Basically, they're unaffordable for tens of thousands of Hamilton County residents. Looking on your website, the average sewer bill is about $610 per year. The EPA has said that an affordable sewer bill should be 2% of a household's income. Doing the math, that means anyone making less than $30,500 has an unaffordable sewer bill. According to the American Community Survey, 30% of Hamilton County households make less than $30,000 per year. That's over 100,000 households. You might be saying that that's the average year, it's not the minimum amount. Well, all right, if somebody makes, only pays the minimum charge, that would have an unaffordable bill if they make less than $23,500. That's still roughly a quarter of the population, or 87,000 households. Is it any wonder that the water shut-offs number in the thousands per year? Frankly, I'd be surprised if there weren't more. We need to expand the existing customer assistance program to cover all low-income seniors, including renters, and we need comprehensive rate reforms so that people are charged a fair amount for sewer services. To pay for it, we need to end the massive corporate subsidies that our large industrial customers receive. MSD offers what's known as declining block rates, which means that the more you use, the less you pay. Declining block rates penalize low-water users, usually low-income households, and they discourage conservation, especially for larger customers. Customers who use more than 50 CCFs of water see a 20% decrease in their commodity use charge. Why? In a world where we want to conserve water, where our sewer systems can't handle the water it receives, why in the world are we incentivizing people to use more water instead of incentivizing them to use less? We need to end this senseless subsidy and restructure rates so that ordinary people can finally afford to flush. Recently, we sent a letter from the Sierra Club, we're discussing possible rate restructuring, and I wanna know if you would work with COFA and the Sierra Club to restructure sewer rates?
Thank you. So I'm familiar with the letter, I'm sure we all received it. So we'll go through a public comment, and we do have some work that we are doing by way of the administration, so we do have an update, but it, I mean, we'll go ahead and go through the speakers' cards, and then we'll have the administration respond to what we're doing, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Our next speaker is Pat Andwan.
Good evening, and I'd like to give best wishes to Commissioner Portune. We really have been blessed with your service, and I feel very honored that we have had Commissioners Treehouse and Dumas, that when you conduct a hearing, it is actually a hearing. You pay attention, you listen, you seem to respond, and I think Commissioner Portune has set the bar, and I'm hoping that in the future we'll have a lot of people who follow in his footsteps. God bless you. Beyond that, I wanted to, I really applaud the young man that was in front of me because he had a lot of good statistics, which I support. I appreciate the work you've already made towards the financial assistance program for seniors, and a number of us have applied for that, but I'm hoping that we can get an expansion on, you know, the work that you've already started, and I know that that's already on your plate. The second thing that I wanted to comment on is the 24-hour rule for reporting the sewage. I just think anyone in a crisis, that's kind of a hardship for them, so if you could kind of put some compassion towards that, that would be great. Also, as he pointed out, the affordable water rates are critical for residential users. I feel that we have a wonderful county here, and if we can brag about having our water rates, which everyone uses, in line with the norm, then it's not something we have to complain and billy ache about. Then, my last comment is actually off the subject, and I forgot to mention it on there. Very quickly, the ACLU had a program for volunteers to learn how to register voters in the jail, and we were supposed to make connections to try to get that set up, and I thought perhaps you could point me to who I could work with in order to get some voter registrations in the jail, or even maybe outside the Criminal Justice Center, you know, for, I don't know where to start. They kinda dropped it in our lap as volunteers.
So my administrative assistant, Fatima, will you raise your hand? She is over here. Why don't we follow up?
Okay.
Or as you leave, we'll follow up with you.
Okay, definitely, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just real quick on that, that issue's come up in the past, and we, there has been some groundwork laid already with the sheriff's office, and those who are heading corrections or reentry participated in those discussions as well. And I don't think there's any objection really to working on that, it's just a question of everyone getting together with respect to how to administer it and make sure that it gets done. Can't force anyone to register if they want to, but it's just a simple idea of making all the applications available and walk inmates through the process of what it takes, and if they want to, they will, but I know that, I don't think there's a member of this board that would, you know, be, we're all in favor.
And I knew that, and that's why I felt like I wanted to lay it in front of you. But real quickly, the statistics that they set at this meeting last night was that the legal women voters last year tried to get a kickoff in Hamilton County and registered zero voters because they got turned away, saying they didn't have a room, they didn't have this, they didn't have that. And I thought, that's incredible. I can't, so apparently 64% of people incarcerated in the jail are there pre-trial or for not paying fines, and they're eligible to vote until they're actually convicted of a felony. So if we can get this underway, I think it would be wonderful for our community. In Cuyahoga County, they were able last year to register 400 inmates, 60 to 70% of those inmates voted.
Thank you. So I've just been informed that OJPC is here and AMIS is here, and so these are organizations that are working on these same issues. So I wonder if, if you don't mind, maybe you all could meet either now or as you leave to try to all gather up in the lobby to exchange information and maybe get an update. So I offer that, I don't know who is all in the room, but whoever you are, please, as Pat leaves, maybe we can have a small session out in that for you. Thank you very much. Roger Davis is our next speaker. Welcome.
Good evening. Roger Davis from COFA, Communities United for Action. First, I'd like to commend Commissioner Dumas for signing off on our cap legislation. We hope that the other two commissioners look it over. We've sent letters to you also to sign off on it. We need seniors with their assistance program that we've put out, if you look at your water bill, to help us out on that, and we need legislation on that. So that would be a great situation, a great thing to do. We would like to thank the commissioners for cooperating with us at this point to where we're at, to try to make it a win-win situation. As you know, our work, we work real hard throughout our communities to help senior citizens to get that 25% discount on the water, and we're trying to go broader. So if you would, I don't know if we received your letters back, I think, I know we've gotten Commissioner Dumas' letter back, and that would really stand heavily as you would think agreeable, if you would send us our letter back. Yeah, your name, but we need to know. We also are looking at, today, we have speakers that may address the situation on our 24-hour recovery. We think that should be worked out. We thought it was already worked out, but I guess we're still working with you two guys, or three guys, or what have you. And it's gonna be a great night, and we have two more speakers from COFA that I know came with us to talk to you about their situations with the sewer problems that we've had.
Thank you.
So again, I thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is, yes?
I'm sorry, but would you prefer for me to wait till everyone speaks and then try to respond? I don't wanna lose the liability to respond.
I would, only because I think the staff is already working on some of these issues, and so I wanna make sure that we have a common understanding of what's already being worked on, because we've all received your letters, I think we've all met with you as well.
Yes.
Some action is being taken, so I just wanna make sure we all understand that, and then, if you don't mind.
I just wanted to update, I did respond in writing to COFA on Tuesday.
Yes.
Sent it electronically, so you would have my response to all of these things.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, we have it. Yes, we have it, but I think you're saying the same thing we're saying. So, thank you for helping, working out, and making this a serious situation.
It is, it is serious.
All right. Thank you.
We'll get an update on what staff's working on it, and they are because we all want to be helpful.
All right. All right. Our next speaker is Elder Donnell Ragland.
Good evening, everybody commissioners. I'm Elder Donnell D. Ragland. I'm with COFA. I have spoke before the panel several times, and my last time speaking, I had asked the panel to please do not forget the renters. I am a renter of a house. The lease is in my name. I pay the sewer to the water, gas and liquid. I qualify for the system program. The only thing is, we don't have anything in there for renters, as myself. So, I'm, I'm paying the full load. Uh, I'm held responsible for everything at the home that I'm renting from, and so we would like, uh, the commissioners to, uh, add the renters to the, uh, home assistance program. I did a little research. There's nothing in the law that's, uh, would require a change in the law or anything that, uh, needs to be, uh, legally householded. So, I'm asking at this time that we, as renters, will be added as long as we fit all the other qualifications on that assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Roy Davis. Good evening.
Good evening, good evening. My name's Roy Davis. I'm an executive board member of COFA. I'm here to speak on the customer assistance program. Uh, as we know, the Board of, uh, County Commissioners has established a discount rate as is for, uh, seniors 65, uh, years old, but they have a cap on the income. Uh, we'd like to, uh, approach that later on and bring it to attention to all seniors who really need help. Also, we'd like to have it pertaining to low or middle-income persons, disabled persons, uh, uh, people despair, dis, experiencing temporary dis hardship, and owners of rental units that may have a low income attendance. I'm, uh, actually concerned about, uh, to see the landlords included in this assistance program, because myself, I pay rent, but my water bill is included in the rent. So, therefore, if it's included in the rent, and if the landlord can be a part of the assistance program, he can get the discount also, hopefully, you know? And we are asking you guys to sign off on it as, uh, Dumos, uh, President Dumos have also signed. Um, we're, we're, we worked with Cecil, Cecil Thomas on his legal team to come up with a, a working and new legislation. We expanded the law to allow the consi, the consist, consumers to expand the consumer program. We presented to, uh, legislation, but only now Vice President Dumis has signed, and we will need more support as you, as usual. Legislation or, we need President Drehouse, Commissioner Portune, to join and, uh, sign this legislation. I'm repeating some things that have already been said, but it must be said, okay? So, I want to thank you very much for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bob Zacharias.
First of all, thank you for the chance to speak, and I would just like to talk a little bit about the 24-hour notice for MSD, uh, to kind of reiterate the comment that was made early when you're in the middle of trying to salvage your belongings, and particularly in my case, it was a Thursday morning, like 2:00 a.m., and by the time, you know, you try to get the insurance company and everything else, you know, I just assumed that I wouldn't have to make the phone call till Monday when the offices were open, and that's kind of what prompted the denial letter. And then, there was a whole area in our neighborhood that experienced a sewer backup, and some claims were paid, some claims weren't paid, and it was all because of the 24-hour notice, but we were all kind of in the same boat, and luckily, there was an MSD truck on the street, and the driver from MSD came around and told us to make the phone call right then and there, and then he could do his part of it. So, I'm just asking how it has to be approached, that maybe there can be some flexibility in that 24-hour window, or at least some uniformity as to how claims are being paid? So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Florence Miller.
Good evening, commissioners and everyone else. My name is Florence Miller, and I'm also a member of Communities United for Action, and I'm speaking also to the 24-hour rule, the elimination of that, and I understand that this takes legal action, and we would like the commissioners to commit to filing a motion with the federal court about eliminating this, and we're asking, when would you be willing to sign, and what date would that happen, that you would file a motion with the federal court to eliminate this 24-hour rule? Because, I mean, it's, MSD is denying a lot of claims based on this. So, we need you to commit to filing a motion with the court and also sign a date, you know, when you would file this motion with the court, and what date would that be? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Darnice Ellery.
I'm sorry, I just read it off.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ann Kissel.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I just wanted to mention at, um, the December 2018 Commissioners' meeting, at which I think, uh, Commissioner Drehouse was the only one at that time present at that meeting, but, uh, at that meeting, Karen Ball announced that there would be urgent capacity funds, is what she called them, um, available for planning a Ludlow Run project, sewer and stormwater project, and that this would be, this planning would take place in 2019. Um, I'm asking, why hasn't the project moved forward? As far as I know, it hasn't moved forward, and no planning has been done. The property owners in that area would like to be informed, um, about any planning and also be part of the planning, and, uh, as far as I know, nothing has, has started, and I, I'm bringing up the question, why? It hasn't moved forward, nothing's been done in 2019 so far.
Thank you, and Karen's here. We'll have her come up in just one moment. Thank you. Um, our final speaker's card, there are two names on here, Gail and Katie Feigig. You're gonna tag team?
Yes.
Okay. Very good.
This is a, this is a follow-up on what Ann just brought. Um, my name is Gail Feigig, and this is my daughter Katrina Feigig, and, um, we own the house at 1539 Spring Lawn in Northside, um, in the Ludlow Run area. Um, a CSO runs directly through the backyard, um, and it's my understanding that that's a direct violation of the consent decree. So, on April 22nd, several property owners from the Ludlow Run met with Karen Ball and Diane Christie, along with several other MSD engineers. Um, the property owners were reassured that the Ludlow, Ludlow Run would be included in the projects through the urgent capacity fund, um, and I wanted to know, um, my question, one of my questions is, is there evidence that this has taken place? And then, lastly, um, the property owners were also told that a study would be, would need to be done, and the property owners, along with Marilyn Wall from the Sierra Club, met with one of the authors of the 2012 study that was already done on the Ludlow Run, and the author stated that the study was still applicable, um, even with the increase in the water flow there. Um, the 2012 study utilized green infrastructure and was the most cost-effective and the lowest priced study that the MSD received in 2012. So, my last question is, why is it necessary to spend taxpayer money on another study? Uh, could we not use the 2012 study, and could it be reevaluated and potentially implemented?
And I'm the current renter of the last two years, and I still have this beautiful property that I was so excited about, and has this beautiful creek running through, and I have to say to my daughter, don't go near that, and I can't let my pets near that because there's E. coli and who knows what right in the middle of our backyard. So, that feels really toxic and scary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you all for coming. Um, that concludes the speakers' cards. This was not on the agenda tonight, but I know we have, uh, I know we've been working on some of these issues, so, uh, we don't have a full report back, but, uh, just a couple of days ago, Holly and I spoke about some of the activity that we were trying to accomplish relative to the letters that you have sent. So, um, we might want to do a more full vetting at another time, but at this time, uh, maybe we could get an overview of what's happening related to what the speakers talked about. So, I don't know, who wants to go first? Holly wants to go first.
I think Karen and I will tag team. Good evening, Holly Christman, Assistant County Administrator.
Karen Ball, Hamilton County MSD Compliance Coordinator.
So, I think to start, if that's okay with you, um, I just want to give a background of where we've been since the Rate Affordability Task Force in 2016, just to make sure we're all, um, on the same, uh, playing field here. So, in 2016, the Board, um, authorized a Rate Affordability Task Force. Karen and I were a part of that, um, and through that task force, there were several recommendations made, and several that have been implemented, and some that are, um, in progress. And so, just to recap, as you've heard, we recently launched was a customer assistance program for low-income seniors, and we heard an update from MSD on that just a couple weeks ago. Uh, we did implement monthly billing, which was, I believe, the number-one affordability strategy. That was implemented last year?
Beginning of last year.
And we also reduced the base rate to 3 CCF.
And one more, there was, uh, the multifamily, um, rate structure was standardized to, to simply go with the meter size rather than meter size plus, uh, units.
Uh, one item that was also recommended in the task force report was to look at an impervious surface fee charge, and, um, this is, this is interesting timing. Because we were getting ready to meet with each of you, and it will be on, uh, planning to be on next week's agenda, a resolution, um...
On the formal?
On the formal agenda.
Okay.
A resolution authorizing a work group to, um, study the impervious surface fee as recommended through the 2016 Rate Afford, Affordability Task Force. With that, we've also, um, anything else with the rates that you wanted to bring up?
I think that covers, well, I guess, um, that does cover the rates for, for right now, yeah. The impervious surface, I think, is where the people are going to see the, the biggest relief, um, a, and across the board, the residential customers are carrying the burden of the, the rain-derived inflow and infiltration, um, very, very, um, at a rate of like 65% of their bill. 35% of the bill is metered. So, we need to get to the point where the, the impervious surface layer, um, that is being put together with the cages folks is completed. Um, that's going to take some time, but at the same time, we're going to be working with groups, um, including the working group, um, to, to advance the conversation, to communicate it to the people that we need to communicate it to and why it's so important, and how big a help it can be when we get to the point where we can launch it.
Um, in addition to that, we have spoken, Commissioner Drehouse, as you mentioned, um, talked about expanding the cap, um, and also the 24-hour, uh, notice after discovery of a, of a potential SVU. Um, we have contacted, communicated with MSD, and so I would like to, if the gentleman who spoke earlier about the, the 24-hour, um, concern, I would like to speak with him because it is our understanding that, um, no claims have been denied solely based on exceeding the 24-hour notice. So, I would like to get more information and, and work with MSD to clarify that. The speaker is correct, there, this would require a consent decree change, and that's a conversation I think we all need to have, um, about that.
The 24-hour notice.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, um...
Ben President.
Yeah, can I just ask a couple other, just clarifying questions? Um, also, uh, my recollection is we did have some conversation about the base rates, uh, and there was, one speaker noted that, uh, if we were, could lower the base, we've talked to MSD about this before, lower the base rate and have the rest of the charges be based on usage, that that would incentivize using less water? Not, in, right now, I don't think it incentivizes using more, but it certainly doesn't incentivize using less. So, um, did, is there any update on that?
I have no update for this evening, but I do know that as part of the rate task force recommendations, we were going to go ahead and set it at a 3 CCF, and then see how that impacted the, the collection of, of the, the rates that we need to keep the, keep the, uh, the facilities running, um, and then we were going to take a look at if there was any, any ability to move, um, lower, uh, with, with little impact to the, the system itself, to be able to fund the system.
Did it impact the rates? Is that what you're referring to?
And cost of service, yes. Yeah.
And then I have another question, but others want to weigh in, so.
Well, I just want to reiterate again, um, first of all, that, that, um, several speakers have, uh, after I spoke, um, earlier, have raised the issue of it would be good for the entire board to respond to the letter, and again, I did respond to the letter, um, and that was sent electronically to COFA on Tuesday. So, if, if you have not seen it, I can resend it, but, um, I would respectfully ask COFA to make it available to the membership if they could, because I have responded and responded to these three issues specifically. Uh, second, uh, with respect to rates, just as a starting point, the Board has, um, been very active in, uh, doing what it can without addressing these specific requests that have been made. The Board has done whatever it can to ensure that, uh, that rates not go up at all, if possible, and to continue to do things to help to make rates lower, uh, if possible. So, for the past, how many years has it been, Karen, um, that, that rates have not gone up at all?
2015.
Since 2015. There, there's been zero rate increases at all at MSD, and that's been because of the action taken by the Board of County Commissioners, um, in a bipartisan manner. Some of those boards were under Republican control and others under Democratic control, but we all share in the desire to not raise rates and impose further, uh, financial hardship on residents, ratepayers in Hamilton County, um, if, if at all possible. So, we have successfully done that consecutive year since 2015, we've not raised rates. Third, with respect to, um, the cost of operation, the consent decree is driving so much of the work that MSD does, um, and as a consequence, the rate structure, uh, in, uh, in a great measure because of the obligations that we face under that consent decree and the work that's required to be done, but, uh, we have worked tirelessly since, uh, 2010 to, um, effect legislation nationally that would allow us the opportunity to keep rates, uh, at or below where they are, and hopefully to... us the opportunity to keep rates at or below where they are and hopefully to be able to lower rates as a consequence of it. This was a national initiative that was pioneered by Hamilton County. We took the lead on it. We had a number of other states and municipalities or, or counties that signed off with us on this. And it all culminated this past January with model legislation being adopted by both the Senate and the House and signed by law, signed into law by the President in January of this year. I was on a conference call with EPA and with some of our affiliate members and the lead Washington consultant that we've been working on this over time, just this past May, to get an update on where things are. That update, I will tell you, was not specifically encouraging, although EPA is working toward creating rules and regulations subject to public comment on how the new legislation will be enforced and implemented. We have since, the county responded to that to make sure that EPA embraces fully the dictates of this legislation. And a lot of it has to do with the ability of local communities to be able to revisit their consent decrees with the regulators, with the folks from EPA and the Department of Justice in Washington around how quickly EPA will begin its implementation of this. But the bottom line is that this legislation was costed out for Hamilton County. And given the work that remains to be done, it's been costed out that it could save Hamilton County ratepayers as much as $1 billion on the cost of consent decree work because of what it will allow us to do, either in revisiting the consent decree or in the, the context of how we implement the consent decree, utilization of green infrastructure and, and other things. But $1 billion is nothing to sneeze at in terms of cost reductions on a program that is as expansive and has as many projects in it as this does. And that was something that was pioneered by the county, and we stayed on that for every year dating back to 2010 to ensure that we, I think even before 2010, to ensure that, that we get the full benefit of this necessary change on an issue that has national significance. And we're one of 781 communities nationwide that are faced with the same thing. So, it was good that that law was passed into law and is now the law of the land and EPA needs to implement it because it, because it is the law and it should save us money and give us the ability then, through those savings, it's another way and other means to work to keep rates low for everybody. Now, that goes, those things are all elements outside of the recommendations from the MSD Rate Affordability Task Force, but the, the task force did encourage the continuation of that work to conclusion, and we have and we've done, and we have a very, very positive result. One of the ways that we are attempting immediately to implement that is we are required to present a Phase Two or Phase II recommendation of projects and what that's going to look like and how it will be done and so on. We've had these litigation battles with the city that seem like they never end and, and we're all frustrated with that. But the Court of Appeals for the United States Sixth Circuit, which is the jurisdictionally, the Sixth Circuit covers all federal issues in Michigan, Ohio, Kentucky, and Tennessee. And so, our issues regarding reforming the consent decree, how we move forward from the expiration of the 1968 agreement, the 50-year-long agreement that has bound our hands somewhat, but does lay out also exactly what we are to do and what the city is to do relative to this joint relationship that we have with, with the city. But the Sixth Circuit just ruled, and they ruled in the county's favor on every one of the issues that were in there. Because part of our challenge has been getting MSD, its director, their management team, and the City of Cincinnati as represented by their city manager, top managerial staff, and the city council to, to work in a manner in which that 68 agreement is structured and with its parameters. And in a nutshell, the city is required to do what we ask them to do when it comes to matters of MSD. I mean, it uses a lot more flowery language than that, but it's very, very simple. The city is the agent of the county. The county is the principal. The county adopts all policy. The county is responsible for rates. The, the county is the entity that is responsible for establishing the direction that MSD goes and so on and so on, but the city has not responded that way. We've adopted all manner of decisions relative to what MSD should do and how they should manage it and so on, and they fight us on this. And one of the areas where they're fighting us on this is in the area of what projects we do next, in what order we do them, how long the program is, and so on. And the city by law now, by virtue of this decision, is required to do what we want us, what we want them to do, but they're not doing that. Instead, they continue, they being MSD, continue to go down this path of, well, we're not going to do what the county tells us to do, we're going to wait and, and get in behind what the city is doing and ignore what the county says it should do. And so on, this Phase Two of projects, we've laid out a, a project plan that before you really get into the impact of the new legislation, would over, over the time of the plan, affect rates only to the degree of 3%. And that's, you know, again, without getting the full impact of this legislation involved and other ways that we can do things and revisit the consent decree to begin with. The city, on the other hand, the, the effective increase of what they've put out there initially was 29%, and Jeff Aludo, I think, we, we have new numbers on that where it's even higher in terms of what the city is proposing to do. And then the regulators had their own plan that they told us that they might do because the city and the county are fighting, and that would have caused an 80% increase in rates, 80%. So, we're fighting all of this in an effort to try to keep rates down and low and not to rise, in addition to the specific things that COFA has now asked of us as special programming, to try to help individuals who are in need, which we're all in favor of doing anything and everything that we can in a responsible manner. But this is what's going on. We're fighting to keep rates low. We're fighting in every different arena that we can to try to make sure that your rates don't go up and that we have a sewer district that will follow what we tell them to do because that's what they're supposed to do. That's what the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals just said. They're supposed to follow us, but yet they keep objecting to that and not doing it and not following what we tell them to say, and that continues to go on. And so, we're still in court to make sure that, that this new direction and order is outlined by the Court of Appeals for the Sixth Circuit, gets followed by MSD and is followed by the city. And, and those are next steps for us in terms of how we go about making sure that the ruling by the court is implemented across the board for our ability to, to continue to do everything we can to make sure that MSD runs efficiently, effectively, at reduced cost and so on, and does not continue to act in a rogue manner, independent of, of what we, the Board of County Commissioners, wants to have done. So, if you follow that work all along the way, we're doing everything we can. These issues like the 24-hour rule, I know at the hearing that we had in Chiviet, the, the Board meeting in Chiviet, that came up. And as I recall, there was unanimity among the county commissioners to want to put an end to that 24-hour rule so that it does not become an impediment to anybody getting a claim addressed. And, you know, what, if anything, MSD has done to make sure that that's fully implemented as opposed to doing what they traditionally have done, which is not do what we've asked them to do directly, but instead have followed what the City of, of Cincinnati tells them to do or wants them to do. You know, that's part of the, the brick wall that we keep running into relative to responding, I won't say responding, we're responding to everything COFA and the citizens are asking of us to do. It's just our ability to have our response implemented by MSD and the city is where we keep getting, running into this brick wall because they continue to act as if they don't have to listen to us, as if it's, well, business as usual, we don't have to follow what the court said, you know, we don't have to do this, we don't have to do that, we're just going to do our own thing. And that's not the way the courts should work, and I, I hope that we will be able to cause the courts, if, if we can't get the city and MSD to do what they're required to do under law, then it's my hope that we'll be able to have the, the local courts enforce their decisions in a manner that is expeditious and so we're not continuing to get blocked by them in doing the things that we know need to be done, doing the things that you have asked us to do that we want to be able to do, but that's what we keep running, running into. Sorry for the length of that, but, you know, I, I've, I've been fighting this stuff for...
Probably would have had them sit down.
Well, there is one...
I've, I've been fighting this stuff for a long time.
There is one more, one more comment that, actually, there were three commenters on the, the Ludlow Run. It was, in fact, approved by the Board of County Commissioners as part of the Phase Two Plan and the CIP that was approved for funds to be spent on the planning level exercises, including some modeling that needed to be done for the Ludlow Run area to get, to get the, what, what is currently completed, the study that's currently completed is an early planning level study. It has no detailed design, it has no details in terms of, of, you know, where things would go, where, where the, where the actual detention basins could be with any degree of certainty. So, more has to be done to develop a, a, a plan of action for Ludlow Run. And we did, we did in the, your authorization of the CIP and the Phase Two Plan that the, the commission submitted to the regulators on time, included it as part of the path forward under adaptive management. That would also require the approval of a new, new schedule and plan.
Thank you. Okay. So, we have an item coming forward next week related to impervious surface. We, I, I talked to Cecil Thomas, Senator Thomas, I don't remember, it was either this week or last, and I didn't understand him to have a final piece of legislation yet, so I will circle back with him because he, there were a number of different items that were, had been included in the original draft, and I did talk to him about whether or not he was going to leave all of that in. The things, the thought process was what can we do and what will pass? And so, I said, well, let me know when there's a final ready. So, I, if there's a final, I'm not aware of it, but I, I will circle back with Senator Thom, Thomas's office to make sure that, and then once we have a final, we can all weigh in. I mean, I don't know what I would be weighing in on yet because there isn't any final legislation to my knowledge. And I just want to say, as we continue to have these ongoing conversations, there's always this balance between what we can do and its impact on rates. And we will continue to be cognizant, as I think has been expressed, about trying to keep rates flat in addition to providing some relief to, as we have with the cap program, but trying to expand that to other populations in the county. So, and Jack Rennickamp is here, and Jack, could you come forward real quick? I just want to drill down because you are right that when we talked about the 24-hour notice, I'm pretty sure all three of us said that is something we would support, expanding that timeframe. And so, did, am I hearing that it would, it's part of the consent decree? And so, what would an action of this Board be to try to change that part of the consent decree?
Jack Rennickamp with Metropolitan Sewer District. The 24-hour notification concerning claims is indeed a part of the consent decree. I would respectfully, not being an attorney, leave that to legal counsel for both city and county as to what would be necessary steps. But essentially, in a broad brush standpoint, it would be a modification of the decree to, to incorporate changes that would be accepted by the, the plaintiffs.
Madam President, Jack's correct on that. We can refer that to consent decree counsel tomorrow if the Board's...
Let's do that. Yeah, I didn't, I don't think, I, I know I didn't have the understanding that it was part of the consent decree and it would take some, I mean, that sounds ominous personally to me. However, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't try to do it.
We can, we, we'll also check, as Assistant Administrator Christman said, we, based upon the, the discussion, I believe it was in Chiviet, where this came up as well, we did reach out to MSD, we had discussions with the Director, Diana Christie, and it was our impression that, as, as Holly indicated, that there were no denials of claims based solely upon failure to meet that 24-hour threshold. That's what we've been informed, we can follow up on that again. That's how this is practically amended at this point. But as it relates to options for the Board to address that formally, we can also work through counsel to provide that to the Board.
And to your Board and the Administrator, I had been in communication with Director Christie during this discussion, and she reiterated the Administrator's comments that, to her knowledge, there had not been a denials. That's not to say that there have been denials, but to her knowledge, both when, as Director and prior to being Director, as legal counsel, there had not been denials based upon the 24-hour rule.
I would also, as you do some research on this, maybe try to understand if any other communities have asked for a similar extent. I, I understand that in practice, we might be expanding that past the 24 hours, but I wonder if any other community has asked that we expanded in, you know, in writing as a change to a consent decree that's out there in any other community? So, if we could get a little bit of background on that, maybe, I mean, if such a thing has happened.
I know our SBU program is fairly unique, so it's, we may not find precedent, but we can...
That's why Michael's giving me a look. How many other SBU programs are there?
I, I don't know that there's a lot that we have.
None to my knowledge, to the Board.
All right. Well, that is complicating. All right, well, we'll, we will continue to work on that.
Madam President, the last thing I would just offer to also expound on a point that I think Ms. Ball made a little bit earlier. As we come forward towards the end of this year with a rate recommendation to the Board, we will also come forward on, on the status, as we regularly do with the, the recommendations of the Rate Affordability Task Force, the Customer Assistance Program and Work Group. One of those that I think Karen went into was the three CCF rate, and the Board had talked about is setting that 300 cubic feet as a, as a flat block rate structure, as the gentleman earlier talked about. After we set that, we talked about potentially ratcheting that down to encourage more, more conservation, to make the, the rate structure into a little bit more of a volume-based rate structure. We are looking at that. I don't know that we have the, the data yet to say how the rates, the, the revenue collection of MSD is being impacted by setting that at three CCF. The issue there is that with so much of the cost of MSD fixed cost, we have, half of the operating budget is essentially debt service paying for the capital improvement program through the consent decree. And as you shift down into more of a volume-based rate structure, that may be desirable from several policy perspectives, but it also makes the, the revenue stream much more volatile. And when so much of the cost structure is fixed, it becomes potentially problematic. So, we, we set it at three CCF with the idea of continuing to look at it and trying to ratchet down as it made sense. And we'll come back to you later on this year with some recommendations on that because we know that's the policy prerogative of the Board and the policy direction of the Board. We just want to do it prudently so that we don't wind up with some problems that relates to revenues and the ability to cover costs.
Thank you. Okay? Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it. And we'll continue to... We'll continue to do this work and I'll reach out. Okay, that is, that is all the speaker's cards I have. Let's move into comments and motions of the board. Commissioner Sumner Adumis.
Thank you, Madam President. I normally defer my comments because we're going so long with other things, but I thought I would just bring up a few comments to let the public know some of the areas I've been working on in the last couple of weeks. But I've been meeting with a few people in the community that are community members and also they are owners of small companies, looking at the possibility of being involved in the development that is going on in this county. How are they able to be involved? And I've made referrals to different people, including Robert Bell, who is our inclusion coordinator, to help out with that area. So I'm continuing to, as I get calls for people to talk to me about the developments that are taking place, I'm open to those who want to talk with me. Also, local union 265 called and had some concerns, issues, and asked if I could come and meet with them, and I went to their place and met with them, and it was a very productive meeting, just a general meeting about some of their concerns. And then I was invited to the opening night of the Playhouse in the Park, which was awesome, and it made me think about, I saw Maura, there she is, yeah, and it made me think about the youth in our community and their ability to have some cultural expansion and to realize some of that experience that I had at Playhouse in the Park. And I'm probably going to be calling Maura, who's very flexible and she's working with me, she's the Director of JFS, excuse me, to look at how we could possibly include some youth, not a lot, but some youth in some complimentary tickets, or not just Playhouse in the Park, but just in general, some cultural experiences that they may not be able to have on their own. So, and also I spoke at Fountain Square the other day for Constitution Day. It was awesome, it was third and fifth graders that were there to listen, they were very informed about the Constitution. And ironically, the Constitution was completed 228 days, 228 years ago, and ironically, the county commission was established about 223 years ago, and it took up until this time for African-American to be a part of this institution. I'm very happy about that, that that has happened. But I really wanted to be a part of that Constitution Day to kind of relate the relevance of the Constitution and what it means for me and for others in the community. I also spoke at UCI classroom at UC, I see Professor Fritz is here, she's the professor of the group, about 30 very energetic young people, and was political science or urban planning? Urban planning. Urban planning. And they asked great questions of me, and I'm, they want to work on campaigns, they want to help out, they've done it before, some of them have done it before, and I certainly advocated for that to happen and for them to reach out to people who may need them to come in, but they are our future, of course, and I'm just glad I was given the opportunity, and I thank you so much for allowing me to do that. I actually went to her class when I first won the election, and they wanted to know how it was now nine months later, so that was very exciting for me. And then I met with Jeff Burden today from FCC and got some clarity on some issues that some of the residents may have in that area and what's going on and how he's dealing with some of the resident concerns, so. And lastly, on the forefront of my mind, of course, and I'm sure all of our minds is the budget, as we continue to look at the budget, it's on the forefront and I'm, it's under review, and looking at how we can generate more resources for, to reduce our deficit and also to look at how we can reduce some of the spending as it relates to our budget that will be coming up. So that will end my report, Madam President.
Thank you. Commissioner Porte.
Madam President, thank you very much. Just a couple of items, and I do see that Engineer Hubbard is here. Ted, could I ask you a few questions about the Hillside closure? I've received some communications from citizens concerning how that closure is going to affect them in Sailor Park and wondering about the whole process, the decision-making, and whether there was any opportunity that they may have to meet with those who were responsible for the decision-making surrounding that, to express fears and concerns they have on how that, that project is going to affect their day-to-day lives in Sailor Park. So can you give us a brief overview, and then I would hope that you're open, like you always are, Ted, to meet with people about that.
Yeah, I actually saw the email that I thought was, he brought some good points up, some of his points I thought weren't appropriate, and I think if you saw my response, you saw what I thought was inappropriate. But bottom line is, we are tacking bridges as we can because Hillside Road is a bridge, we are trying to rehabilitate the entire deck. We're using a hydro process that speeds that, that speeds it up, and so it does require road closure. Now, one of the things that, and I understand this, on the west side, any kind of a road in that area, any kind of a road closure creates problems, and Van Blercombe caused us some problems, that was unexpected, you know, and so what happened, Van Blercombe was unanticipated, we had to go, we had to get that road open as fast as we could, and what happened, South Road in Addison also had to be repaired, and he was upset about that. We met with the mayor, and the mayor did a great job, the mayor of Addison was great and his team, and we, we did have a double closure for a while, we were able to, we were able to reduce that time. To make a long story short, we did postpone projects in that area, Shady Lane, Culver, for example, and now the Hillside project, Hillside Road Bridge, that has been postponed too, so that we don't have so many road closures. But a lot of these bridge projects do require road closures, it's that simple. And so we expect that project to be open before, I believe the date was November 15th, I think it'll be sooner than that, I am on, and I've offered him an opportunity to talk to me directly, and you've seen that too in the correspondence. But, yeah, I'm more than willing to meet with him. These bridges do require closures a lot of times, Keller Road Bridge over on the east side is the same way. And it is difficult, but a lot of times on these two-lane bridges, you just cannot, it's very difficult to have one-way traffic. So our bridge team, I've talked to them, and they said that they felt it was absolutely had to be closed, so. But I do, I welcome the comments, the comments that aren't personal. I do welcome the comments, but, and I am more than willing to meet and talk with the individual, and I've given him my direct lines, so.
Great, thank you for that.
Appreciate your response too, Todd, that was very well done, thank you.
And there was another letter, I don't know if you saw it, from the village council, community council there, and I think their approach was more consistent with what you and I would both like to see done relative to-
Absolutely, and I know Commissioner Demoss, you sent me an email, Todd Gadberry did respond to them, and he, he felt that they were on the same page, they were okay, but again, you know, and if you want to be part of that meeting, when I meet with, if we ever do get a meeting with that individual, obviously that's welcome, more than welcome.
Thank you. And then second, we had a meeting of the Solid Waste Management District Policy Committee today, I should say Recycling and Solid Waste Management District Policy Committee. One of the issues that was before the committee had to do with anaerobic digestion, and I raised that because that was one of the issues that surfaced in our discussions mediation with the city of Cincinnati regarding moving forward with MSD and how to handle all sorts of different waste streams. And I shared the fact that there was a recent decision by the Sixth Circuit that was right on point with respect to our ability to, as a Board of County Commissioners, to work and interact directly with MSD specific to these issues of anaerobic digesters. I expect that we are going to hear from the district regarding a number of budgetary issues as it leads up to our consideration of the budget for next year. But anaerobic digestion is something that I know that the Solid Waste Management District has a keen eye on trying to impact and then ultimately to implement with respect to the 25-year plan and this most recent five-year update by the district relative to that plan and the use of anaerobic digestion to deal with certain waste streams that exist in the county. So just sort of some foreshadowing there about work that they're going to undertake and as a consequence, some issues that may come back in front of us as a Board of County Commissioners as we work with the Solid Waste District in advancing their long-range plan. That's all I've got.
Thank you. I just have three things. The first is that on behalf of the commission, I attended the Cincinnati State 50-year anniversary and offered a proclamation and recognition of that accomplishment to them, and also offered a proclamation on behalf of the board to the grand opening at the African-American Chamber yesterday. They've got a new location at 2303 Gilbert Avenue, really nice facility, it's got good access to parking. Eric Kearney has done a fantastic job with the African-American Chamber, and it was just packed. And so it was, it was a wonderful event, a good celebration of the work that they do and their new facility. And then lastly, I wanted, and I think I've noted this before, there, on September 27th, there is going to be like a one-stop shop for, its reentry is partnering with the Heroin Coalition, with the Sheriff's Office, to provide access to different programs and folks in this community that do treatment, that do assessments, that do things for people that suffer addiction or mental health issues. And so it's the first time we've done it, and I think the idea is to make sure that people that don't always have access to transportation can go around to different providers at this event and try to get some of their needs not met immediately, but some connection to the providers in the community. So it's kind of a test case, but I hope that it's well-attended, and I think we're very excited about it, and Trina Jackson has played a big part in this, as has the Heroin Coalition. So we're excited about that, so it's September 27th, starts at 10 o'clock over in the Justice Center, and our expectation is it will continue to happen once a month, but this is our first time, so. With that, Jeff, I know that you have something else in your byle packet, but it's on our agenda. You may not know that it's item number seven.
Do you know why it's on? I have to do it and do a picture.
There you go, so we're just-
Just take it up with, it's on consent.
I think let's take it up as a matter on the agenda, okay? All right, so do you have anything else?
I do not.
Very good. All right, so we have a couple of regular agenda items. The first couple, or a few I should say, are items related to the engineer. So Ted, if you could come up and give us an overview, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, Ted Hubbard, Hamilton County Engineer. The first item, or item one pertains to an agreement that would authorize us to enter an agreement with, concerning the improvement of Anderson Ferry Road. With Delhi Township, we were able to secure almost $375,000 for a project that would resurface Anderson Ferry Road from Delhi to Rapid Run, and so this agreement allows us to partner with Delhi Township. They were actually the applicants for a Ohio Public Works Commission grant, we were successful in getting it. Item two pertains to the resolution that would actually authorize the commencement of the bidding process so that we can select a contractor to have the work done. I'd love to have that done before, you know, inclement weather hits, if it stays warm, we might get lucky. We've been lucky the last couple of years, although it did rain. Item three pertains to a resolution to establish a no-parking zone on Sheed Road in Colerain Township between Copper Creek and Denler Lane. This area, the parking in the area does create what we consider to be a safety hazard, and we feel that the no-parking, the no-parking zone is warranted. Item four pertains to the vacation, the vacation of right-of-way on Blue Rock Road. It also would authorize the transfer of the fee right-of-way to Colerain Township in the vicinity of White Oak Christian, and this is right by Blue Rock in Chiviot where the relocation work was done. I know there was a question about why the vacation, at least Bob has told me that there was a question as to why the vacation is being presented to you now. Normally you want to get the road, there was a relocation of Chiviot or Blue Rock Road that was actually performed, that's completed, now it's appropriate for us to go ahead and dispose of that right-of-way. It wouldn't be appropriate if we, you know, if we hadn't had the project done. Obviously, if something goes wrong and the work isn't done, you need the right-of-way. So you want to make sure before we present anything to your board that we, that we know that that right-of-way is not going to be necessary. I take any questions? Be glad to take any questions.
I just have a quick question about item number three. What is, I've never seen one of these, so we're journalizing a no-parking zone, what is the community participation part of this process, or is there?
Normally, normally, actually, what will happen is we will actually have people come to us. A lot of times we'll have folks come to us and say, this is a, this is a situation where we think is unsafe. And so what we'll do is we'll go out and we'll actually have a traffic department go out and take a look at it, and we'll check the site distance to see if in fact it is a problem. And if we believe that parking in that area is going to create a safety issue, then we bring it to your board for consideration, for final consideration. So that's generally how it happens. Sometimes we will find something that we think is, I know over the years we've had somewhere, especially in a development where something, the improvements that were supposed to happen didn't happen, and this happened about two decades ago, we had to restrict some turning movements, we had to come to your board to restrict the turning movements because, quite frankly, the developer went to Florida and we couldn't get him. Prosecutor's office tried though, Mike, they did try. But anyway, so, you know, so norm, but many times on these no-parking zones, it is, a lot of it is citizen input, quite frankly.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
No questions.
All right. I will move that we approve of items one through four on our regular agenda.
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thanks, Commissioners, good evening.
Thanks, Ted. Our fifth item on the regular agenda is related to MSD. Here comes Jack Rennick.
Good evening, Commissioners. Jack Rennickamp with MSD. The fifth item on your agenda is a resolution presented for your approval to authorize an intergovernmental agreement between your board and Delhi Township for the third and final phase of the Rapid Run, Delhi Township Rapid Run Flood Control Project. This is a project that has been ongoing over the past 10 years in three phases, and it provides for pre-disaster mitigation relief through funding from the Ohio Emergency Management Agency. Properties that are acquired, and it's a voluntary acquirement by MSD, are then demolished and the space is basically used as green space, as grassy area. So this third phase involves 24 properties. Delhi Township, either at this moment in time, but tonight I know, are also meeting in their, the trustees in their session to pass their collateral resolution to enter into an agreement. This particular resolution calls for you to approve the intergovernmental agreement so 24 residential properties can be voluntarily acquired, and the Ohio Emergency Management Agency has, through FEMA, has contributed 3.9 million. The local match of that is 991,000, and that amount has already been appropriated with the 2019 CIP. Your request is to complete this process so MSD, working with Delhi Township and Ms. Ball, can further and complete this final phase.
Thank you. The maps on this item are really, really dark. Could you tell us where exactly in Delhi this is?
This is lying on Rapid Run Road between Anderson Ferry and Neeb Road.
Anderson Ferry and Wilderness Trace.
Wilderness Trace, that's right.
Okay.
So right along the bend, after the second phase completed, it'll begin at that stage to Anderson Ferry.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. Any questions or comments?
No questions. No questions.
Oh.
The reason that we've been working to secure FEMA funds for these areas is because they were prone to the SBU program. And we've, we spent enormous amounts of money on claims, cleanup and prevention. Prevention wasn't even helping. So there are certain areas of Hamilton County that even with the prevention, don't get the relief they seek. So FEMA grants are great opportunities for us to start to resolve those problems and then in the long run, reduce the overall cost of the SBU program. Another benefit of this area, and trying to acquire all of the properties we're trying to get here, is to take an adaptive approach to what our current plan is for the CSO 523. Right now, in the book, if we were to build what we're required to build and what the regulators want us to build, it's a high-rate treatment facility at what is currently the Delhi Veterans Park and the, a cell tower. So what we're hoping to be able to do is get approval through adaptive management to create a bio-retention area that actually serves the area well and relieves us from the requirement to build that EHRT facility, which, you know, we've, we've been trying to work against remote treatment facilities for a while.
Thank you. I just want to note, I think it's interesting, both with this report and the engineer's report, that we have heard about you matching or accessing outside funds, which I think we need to celebrate. So thank you for doing the work. This is, this is, we're using other folks' dollars here, same with you, Ted. So thank you for, for doing that to try to keep things as manageable as possible for all the rest of us. So just want to celebrate that work. So item number five, then, are there any comments or questions?
No comments.
All right. Very good. I will move to approve of item number five on our regular agenda.
Second.
Yes.
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 Thank you. All right. We'll move to the consent agenda. We've got items six through 13. Seven, by the way, is the by leave that you had. And let's note it. So seven establishes the public meetings for the budget discussion. And so those are in front of us. I will read them, just so the public is aware. There will be two outside the building and one inside the building. One is Thursday, October 3rd, 2019, at 6:30 at the Sharonville Convention Center. And then Tuesday, October 8th, at 6:30 in the Silverton Town Hall. And then the third will be a regular board meeting. Right? Okay. So that is on the consent agenda. So I will move that we approve of items six through 13.
Second.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. And then we've got a travel item, item number 14, requesting authorization to travel at county's expense. The coroner has three employees going to San Antonio, Texas, and the engineer has one employee going to Columbus, Ohio. I will move to approve of the travel items.
Second.
Yes.
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 Thank you. Seeing nothing further, I will move to adjournments.
Second.
Yes.
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 Thank you.